We could have all the council members, please take your seats, please. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Canton City Council. Everybody, please turn your cell phones to vibrate, or preferably off. We are encouraging social distancing, and as you notice, I even ran to get my mask during the little break here. We are, with the quorum being present, the Chair calls this meeting of Canton City Council to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Smuckler.
Here.
Babcock.
Here.
Shulman.
Here.
Hawke.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Scaglione.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Mariel.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Morris.
Here.
Eleven present, one absent.
Mr. President. Okay. Member Babcock, excusing members.
Mr. President, I move we excuse President Shear and Member Fisher from tonight's meeting.
So, yeah, we'll come to that. Um, let's just go through this, and then I'll come back to that. I'm sorry. I haven't done this in a lot of years. Ah, it's been moved and seconded to excuse Member Shear and Member Fisher from tonight's meetings. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call.
Smuckler.
Aye.
Babcock. Aye. Shulman.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglione.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris. Eleven ayes, Mr. President.
Okay, um, the motion carries, and President Shear and Member Fisher are excused from this evening's meetings. Uh, we all please rise for an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, the invocation be led by Member Hall this evening.
Please bow your head. Dearly Father, we give you thanks for the sunlight today and that the air that we woke up breathing. We also ask that you give us guidance on the decisions we make for the city and the residents of Canton. Do all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now under, uh, we are now under agenda corrections and changes?
Mr. President, I move a rule 22A be suspended to add second reading ordinances 18 to 22 and Resolution Number 23 to this evening's agenda.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt informal resolution Number 22 by roll call vote. Are there any remarks? Hearing none. Roll call.
Smuckler.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Shulman.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglione.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris. Nine ayes, two abstentions, Mr. President.
It is, and I'm gonna go off script for a minute. Um, obviously, the resolution has passed, and, um, we congratulate our clerk, Member Dougherty, on his retirement, and look forward to having our new clerk, Jill Wood, as, um, Woods is our, um, new clerk of Canton City Council. To Jill's friends and families that are in the audience, I know this has been a long time coming, but patience gets everything, right? Member Smith?
I got to keep it up. You're definitely right.
Thank you. Moving on with the agenda, and by the way, um, Jill will be sworn in at the first council meeting in September, for all of you that would like to rejoin us and take photos of that great opportunity. They don't want to stay? How do you know they don't want to stay? The rest of the agenda will be a little long and a little tedious, and for those of you that want to excuse yourself, you're more than welcome to do that, and please come back when she's sworn in. Thank you. Moving on, uh, Resolution Number 23.
Confirm reappointment of Mr. John Gunnage to Canton Construction Board commencing 8/9/21 through 12/31/24.
Member Babcock.
Mr. President, I move we adopt informal resolution Number 23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt informal resolution Number 23. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, by voice, vote, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Ayes have it. We now, communications, we're now under communications. Let the Journal show that all communications are received as read. First readings of ordinances. Yes. Mr. Clerk, would you please begin with ordinance Number 1?
An ordinance amending appropriation ordinance Number 49, 2021, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance. Number 2, an ordinance vacating 2 unnamed ollies, 1 10-foot to 12-foot wide, and the other 12-foot wide, and portions of 5th Street Northeast, and accepting the replat of lots 3548, 3549, 3556 through 3558, 42875 through 42877, 6970 through 6974, and part of lots 3559, 6934, 30473 and 30474, and the vacated portions of 2 unnamed ollies and 5th Street Northeast, and declaring same to be an emergency, refer to public safety and thoroughfares. Number 3, an ordinance approving, accepting the replat of lot 43013, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to public safety and thoroughfares. Number 4, an ordinance approving and accepting the replat of lots 20216, 20217, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to public safety and thoroughfares. Number 5, ordinance approving, accepting the replat of part of outlot 241, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to public safety and thoroughfares. Number 6, an ordinance approving and adopting the Canton Neighborhood Development Master Plan and Redevelopment Strategy, and declaring same to be an emergency, refer to community and economic development. Number 7, ordinance amending Exhibit A to ordinance Number 42,000, as amended, classification brand for bargaining unipersonal employed by the city of Canton, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to personnel. Number 8, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, director of public service, entering the contract Stark County Community Action Agency in amount not to exceed $74,000, Malone University in amount not to exceed $50,000, and Stark County Minority Business Association in amount not to exceed $169,000, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance and community and economic development. Number 9, ordinance authorizes Canton City Board of Health to accept a Recycle Ohio Grant from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, authorizing the mayor, director of public service, or the Canton City Board of Health to advertise, receive bids, award, and enter into all contracts needed to facilitate repairs at the recycling center, waives informal resolution requirements of Canton Codified Ordinance Section 105.09 for purchases approved through this ordinance, amending appropriation ordinance Number 49, 2021, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance. Number 10, ordinance amending appropriation ordinance Number 49, 2021, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance. Number 11, ordinance authorizing the mayor, director of public service, to cooperate with, and request the director of transportation to proceed with the lighting improvements at US 30 Raph Road Interchange Line within the city of Canton, authorizing the honor to pay any more obligations related to project, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to public safety and thoroughfares and finance. 14, ordinance authorizing the mayor, director of public service, to enter and change order 14 and 15 final with Set Inc. in amount not to exceed $570,000, $594.27, change order Number 3 final with Michael Baker Jr. Inc. in amount not to exceed $9,585.65 for the Mahoney Road Corridor Project Phase 2, GP 1103, amending appropriation ordinance Number 49, 2021, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance and environmental, public utilities. 15, ordinance authorizing the mayor, director of public service, to enter and change order Number 1, and final with Central Allied Enterprises Inc. in amount not to exceed $21,500 for the St. George Streets Gate Project, GP 1333, authorizing the honor to pay any more obligations related to same, and declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance and public property capital improvement. Number 16, ordinance authorizing to hire Ms. Casey Abraham to fill the Human Resources journalist position at annual salary $48,000, and Ms. Dorothy Dipmore to fill the health benefits manager position, annual salary $69,000, in the Human Resources Department, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to personnel and finance. Number 17, emergency resolution to authorize the mayor, director of public service, or safety, to execute the One Ohio Participation Agreement and to accept the material terms of the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement pursuant to the One Ohio Memor- Memorandum and Understanding and consistent with the terms of July 21, 2021 National Opioid Settlement Agreement, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance. Mr. President.
Before we, um, go into a recess for the record, I want to, um, to show and reflect that I just excused Member Hawke this evening. He does not feel well, and he went home. At this time, the Chair would declare an in-house recess for the Finance Committee and Economic Development, Public Safety Thoroughfares, Environmental and Public Utilities, Public Property Capital Improvement, and Personnel Committee in to meet in regard to ordinances 8 through 12, Resolution Number 14, ordinances 14 through 16, and Resolution Number 17 on your agenda. You are now in recess.
It is 7:16. We'll call Finance to order. Uh, ordinance Number 9, an ordinance authorizing the Canton City Board of Health to accept the Recycle Ohio Grant for the Ohio Env- Environmental Protection Agency, authorizing the mayor, director of public service, or the Canton City Board of Health to advertise, receive bids, award, and enter into all contracts needed to facilitate repairs at the recycling center, waives informal resolution requirements of Canton Codified Ordinance Section 105.09 for purchases approved through the this ordinance, amending appropriation ordinance Number 49 slash 2021, and declaring same to be an emergency.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my goal is to have a title longer than what our Service Department usually has for titles on projects, so that's what I'm trying to do there. But thank you for the consideration. This is a grant that we received from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency. Uh, the goal is to provide some much-needed upgrades and repairs to the recycling center, including some paving, fencing, security, and the like. Um, it involves both operations between us and, um, the service directors, so that's why there's the dual responsibility there.
Questions? Hearing none, we'll sign it out.
Thank you.
We'll move on to ordinance Number 10, an ordinance amending appropriation, ordinance Number 49 slash 2021, and declaring same to be an emergency.
Mr. Chairman and members of, uh, the committee, this is an appropriation from, uh, the unappropriated balance of our infant mortality reduction fund. As we receive funds for reimbursements for services and for other grants, uh, that goes into that, um, unappropriated balance, and, uh, as we've gotten more in there, we need to now appropriate that balance so that we can spend the money for its intended uses.
Questions? We'll sign it out.
Thank you.
Move on to ordinance Number 11, an ordinance authorizing the honor to pay all moral obligations for Pradco expenses, for psychological assessments, for safety forces recruitment, amending appropriation ordinance Number 49 slash 2021, and declaring same to be an emergency.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, um, with the transition that took place in human resources as well as in the Civil Service Department, invite voices that we u- usually, uh, receive in reference to the Pradco testing that's done for the safety forces were sent to inactive emails. These, uh, invoices totaled approximately $42,195, and therefore making them a moral op- and we are asking for additional appropriations to get us through for the rest of the year as we continue our safety force recruitment.
Questions? Hearing none, we'll sign it out.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, Member Morris.
Director Perry, question for you, please. If we spent $42,000 in the first eight months on this, isn't $32,000 for the last four months a bit steep?
No, uh, it would, it's based on how many individuals you hire at a given time. So, no, that's not.
And Mr. Morris, this is Director Kraus. We're also in the process of, uh, recruiting both police and fire personnel through the end of the year, that we intend to hire some additional staff, so those will all be evaluated later, um, toward the end of the year.
And that's what I stated in the very beginning of what I said beginning. We're, we're gonna continue our recruitment process throughout the year.
Other questions? All right, we'll sign it out. Moving on to ordinance Number 12, an ordinance amending appropriation, ordinance Number 49 slash 2021, declaring same to be an emergency.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, um, this is a supplemental appropriation, uh, for a bid that we need to do for the Sugar Creek Water Treatment Plant Lagoon Dechlorination Facility. Um, effectively, uh, the, due to rising costs and the need to get this done now for EPA, um, regulations, uh, we, we posted the project, and the bids came back well over 10% beyond the engineer's estimate. So, in light of recent economic developments, we have redone the engineer's estimate and are doing a supplemental appropriation in order to get this project built. Effectively, what this is, is to do, um, just as a, a reference point, um, it is, it is going, it is to, um, dechlorinate the water from the sludge lagoon, from the lagoon, so effectively, the water that's used to clean the water treatment plant goes into a backwash lagoon. Before we can discharge that water into the, uh, into the creek adjacent to the plant, we have to dechlorinate the water with sodium bisulfite. We have to build a facility to keep the sodium bisulfite at the proper temperature and to house that, so that is what this facility is going to do.
Okay, questions? Hearing none, we'll sign it out. Move on to ordinance Number 17, emergency resolution to authorize the mayor, director of public service, or safety, to execute the One Ohio Participation Agreement and to accept the material terms of the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement pursuant to the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and consistent with the terms of the July 21, 2021 National
Opioid Settlement Agreement, and declaring same to be an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of council. Uh, just to recap a little bit, I've been before you a couple of times to talk about the nationwide opioid litigation. The first time was to ask for your vote to pursue the litigation. Then I came back again, and we talked about the One Ohio MOU, and that's something that we entered into, which basically gives a framework for all of Ohio that if we get money, how we would divide it up. I have to say, I'm very proud of Ohio. We are the only ones that have such a framework, and that's what kind of brings me to you tonight. So, I'm sure you read in the paper a possible nationwide settlement with what they call the Big Three, and they're distributors of the opioids. And the Big Three are people you've heard about, um, McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen. And so, there's a proposed national settlement that would be $21 billion. But that settlement is far from sure. There are many states attorneys general that don't like it. It may or may not go forward, but that's what you've been reading about in the paper. So, everyone's working on that. It could happen, it might not happen. If it did happen, Ohio would get approximately $804 million, which would be divided up pursuant to our One Ohio MOU, which I'll go into in a moment. But we're in a very fortunate position in Ohio, and it's just fortuitous. We have our One Ohio MOU, so we actually have a framework. We know how the money, we don't have to fight amongst each other. But also, the state of Ohio has a lawsuit against these three in September, in federal court, up in Cleveland. They do not want to go forward with that, obviously, because I think some rather unattractive facts would come out. So, they want to settle with Ohio even if the national settlement falls apart later, and we are the only ones in that position. So, this ended up just in the last week, basically, um, that's why it's a big hurry. So, what they're asking for is for us and all the other participating political subdivisions, and I've already, I've gone to statewide meetings, I've been with Alliance's law director and, um, Masland's law director, because we're the biggest cities here, to talk about how this would be. So, what we are asking is to opt into the settlement framework and try to get this Ohio-centric settlement going. Um, our national council recommends it, our regional council in Akron recommends it, our local council Placis recommends it, and I recommend it. So, why? Um, as you know, these are only three of the defendants. We have lots of defendants, and most of them are going into bankruptcy, like Purdue is. Once they go into bankruptcy, I, I really have no way of telling you what monies will come out of that or how it will be. It kind of goes out of our power. So, once these lawsuits actually start hitting the courtroom, I think, and I think our national and regional council believe, they'll all start falling into bankruptcy. Um, so, that's not good. The other thing that's not good is if the lawsuit goes forward in September, that is just the state of Ohio. We're in line down further. So, if that lawsuit is successful, all that money goes to the state. It doesn't go to any of us as local subdivisions. And if it's a huge settlement or a huge verdict, it could also drive the Big Three into bankruptcy. So, that's what makes this very time-sensitive about what we want to talk about. So, the MOU, just to recap, so you know how the money goes, and we all agreed to this because the state was coming in trying to take all the money, if you'll recall, which made me a little unhappy. So, what was agreed to is 15% of the money, any, any money that come in, uh, through settlement, not verdict, would go to the state, 30% gets divided to the local governments like us, and it's a formula that is not just by population, but by our opioid overdoses and deaths, and how hard we were hit, and we were hit pretty darn hard, as you well know. And then 55% would go into a foundation, a nonprofit that is run by the local governments and the state, along with, um, addiction and health experts. And then that money would be pooled, and each region could apply for these big chunks of cash for things like treatment, treatment facilities, education, et cetera. The great part about this is they made Stark County its own region. So, we actually have a very united feeling because we don't have to, there are other counties that are, several counties are a region, and different cities are competing. So, it's nice that we're a region. So, those are all parts of the MOU, which we've already agreed to, which would, how, how this would go on. The deadline for us to have the city sign on to what they call a participation agreement is this Friday. They only gave me like, you know, a couple days to get this down here. But that's, you know, what, and if we opt in, that's still not a guarantee. They have, we have to have enough subdivisions opt in to convince the Big Three to settle, because they're not gonna settle with a few and then get sued by a million other people. So, even if we opt into this participation, I can't guarantee that it'll go through, but if enough of us do, and, and I thought we did a good job with the MOU, getting a lot of really different political thoughts all together and said, you, we're all united in this fight against this horrible killer, um, that we could do it, and if we can get the settlement, the great thing is the Big Three is gonna set our $804 million aside, so that no matter else what happens, it's all ready for us. And then we have to hit benchmarks to get all of it, but that's a process too that, you know, and it would be over time. So, uh, it'd be a way to, even if they go bankrupt later, even if they get hit with big verdicts, that Ohio would preserve what it would get in the national settlement if it in fact happened. So, I know that's a lot of information, but, um, I'll take any questions, um, that any of you have.
Uh, I have a que-
Sure.
I understand that the shared money with the state is going to go for opiate problems such as, um, counseling, et cetera, correct?
All the money. Every dime of this has to be spent in a very strict parameter Judge Polster has so dictated, so that any settlement money has to be spent on opioid-related expenses. Now, there's gonna be wiggle room there, because we can go back and, I hope, if this all, to compensate us for things we've already spent.
Let's just do the hypothetical. So, we can go back, does this, um, for example, can this be used, I'm just talking about our share, not the matching share with the state.
Mm-hmm.
Could this be used, for example, in money that we have spent in drug-related activity with the police department?
To some degree, it can. They're going to set out all the guidelines for us, and Judge Polster, I think, is gonna have a very active hand in a lot of what we can do, but we will have more leeway in our percentage that goes just to, for instance, to Canton than-
That's what I'm discussing right now.
Yeah, we will have more leeway there than we will in the regional aspect.
What's your ballpark estimate, if this comes through, on how much Canton will get?
I'm not supposed to talk about that except in executive session. I do have numbers that are possible, and if you want to go into an executive session, we can, but I have to tell you, these numbers are very fluid, because it depends what benchmarks we hit and how many political subdivisions sign on to whether we get 70% of the 804, which I think is a very realistic estimate, or whether we get 80% or 100%. It all depends, and it also depends on time. So, I can give you some rough estimates, but we would have to adjourn for brief moment for me to do that. Our council has asked, our national council has asked us to do that.
Um, I'm sorry, I think this is important, and I think this is important for our budget for, um, I'm going to ask the, um, Majority Leader to please ask for a small executive session to go into to discuss this and exactly what this money can be used for.
so that any settlement money has to be spent on opioid-related expenses. Now, there's going to be wiggle room there because we can go back and I hope if this all, to compensate us for things we've already spent.
Let's just do the hypothetical. So we can go back to this, for example, can this be used, I'm just talking about our share, not the matching share with the state. Could this be used, for example, in money that we have spent in drug-related activity with the police department?
To some degree, it can. They're going to set out all the guidelines for us, and Judge Polster, I think, is going to have a very active hand in a lot of what we can do. But we will have more leeway in our percentage that goes just to, for instance, the Canton than...
That's what I'm discussing right now.
Yes, we will have more leeway there than we will in the regional aspect.
What's your ballpark estimate, if this comes through, on how much Canton will get?
I'm not supposed to talk about that except in executive session. I do have numbers that are possible, and if you want to go into an executive session, we can. But I have to tell you, these numbers are very fluid because it depends what benchmarks we hit and how many political subdivisions sign on to whether we get seventy percent of the eight hundred and four, which I think is a very realistic estimate, or whether we get eighty percent or a hundred percent. It all depends, and it also depends on time. So I can give you some rough estimates, but we would have to adjourn for brief moment for me to do that. Our council has asked, our national council has asked us to do that.
I'm sorry, I think this is important, and I think this is important for our budget for, I'm going to ask the majority leader to please ask for a small executive session to go into to discuss this and exactly what this money can be used for.
You want to include finance or...
No, I just wanted to leave it open, and we can come back to finance. I just want to get this, I think this is important. So what do we, what's the motion? Law Director, if you would handle that motion and I'll...
I would ask that the majority leader move to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation, to include the members of the cabinet, the mayor, all of city council, the clerk staff, the clerk, myself from the law department, and unfortunately, everyone else will have to go.
Can the treasurer's office and the auditor's office stay for this too?
Yes.
Please. So moved. Smucker?
Hi.
Babcock?
Hi.
Showman?[654.79]
Further questions? Hearing none, we'll sign that out. It is 7:44. That concludes Finance. 7:44, we'll go into the joint session of Finance and Environmental Public Utilities Committee. Ordinance number 14. An ordinance authorizing the Mayor Director of Public Service to enter into change orders 14 and 15 final with SET Incorporated an amount not to exceed $570,594.27. And change order three final with Michael Baker Jr. Incorporated an amount not to exceed $9,585.65 for the Mahoning Road Corridor Project Phase Two GP 1103, amending appropriation ordinance number 49/2021 and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, these are the final change orders needed to close out the Mahoning Road Corridor Phase Two project. As was read, for SET, the construction phase, the total dollar amount being paid out is Essentially, by and large, those numbers and those dollars are being spent for multiple unforeseen utility conflicts that took part as a part of the project. That kicks the total construction of Mahoning Road Phase Two up to $10,101,878.48. I do want to point out, though, that of this $570,000 change order, only $11,546.57 will be paid for out of city capital dollars. The remaining $500 and almost $60,000 will be paid for out of a combination of ODOT funds and county municipal road fund grant dollars. So just like the rest of the project, the vast, vast majority of this final change order is covered by non-city capital dollars. On the Michael Baker Jr. Construction Oversight piece, the $9,500 final change order brings the total construction oversight cost up to approximately $1.4 million. And this should close everything out.
Questions?
Service Director Hyman, so is everyone along the Mahoney Corridor happy and has all punchless items been completed?
I mean, to my, I mean, to my knowledge, I mean, if there are any outstanding issues, I am not personally aware of them. It's my understanding that most items have been complete for some time. And from a timing standpoint, the reason we're asking for first reading passages, there was an extended amount of time to work out the details of how we were going to pay this this final change order. So I can follow up with Dan in the morning, but to my knowledge, you know, the punchless items are well complete. I am unable to speak to every individual business or residence to say that they are happy with the with the project. So could there be a dissatisfied person for one reason or another out there? Sure. But generally speaking, there's nothing that I'm aware of. If there's something that you're aware of, please let us know and I can see that it's addressed as soon as possible.
Thank you. Court Doctor D., are you satisfied?
Yeah, 18 years later.
Figure if you're happy with it, it's good to move forward with this. All right. It is 7:40.
They face this, aren't they? That's what I want. That's what I saw.
The never-ending project. All right, 7:48, that concludes joint session Finance and Environmental Public Utilities Committee. 7:48, we'll go into joint session of Finance and Public Property Capital Improvement Committees. Ordinance number 15, an ordinance authorizing the Mayor Director of Public Service to enter into change order one and final with Central Allied Enterprises Incorporated an amount not to exceed $21,500 for St. George's Streetscape Project GP 1333, authorizing the auditor to pay any more obligations related to the same and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this was a relatively small streetscape project that was done at St. George's along the Cherry Avenue Corridor. The reason for the change order is the change order total is for $21,500. It's beyond 10% of the contract threshold, so therefore we have to come back to counsel. Effectively, what happened here is it was originally thought that the decorative lights would be able to be, the electrical service would be able to be run from the overhead electrical wires, and that was not possible. So additional electrical work was needed in order to service the the lights and the other components.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, we'll sign it out. 7:49, that concludes Finance and Public Property Capital Improvement Committees. 7:49, we'll go into the joint session Finance Community and Economic Development Committees. Ordinance number eight, an ordinance authorizing the Mayor Director of Public Service to enter into contract with the Stark County Community Action Agency an amount not to exceed $74,000, Malone University an amount not to exceed $50,000, and Stark County Minority Business Association an amount not to exceed $169,000, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we're asking for authorization to... Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of council, we're asking for authorization to spend American Rescue Plan dollars with three different community partners. The first one is Stark County Community Action Agency. With this particular program, Stark County Community Action Agency will work with faith-based institutions to provide ongoing communication and support to low-income seniors located within the city of Canton. They will also contract with aides who can go out to these homes and work with seniors who have been negatively impacted by the COVID pandemic. With Malone University, with this particular funding, we're asking for housing assistance to junior and senior Malone University students who also have been negatively impacted by the pandemic. In essence, we're trying to assist them with room and board, and we've worked with Malone University in the past on various programs. And finally, the third program is with Stark County Minority Business Association. This is to provide programming to minority businesses, again, to address the economic fallout due to the pandemic. This particular program will provide business counseling, mentorship, and assistance to minority businesses to help them grow and navigate their way through the pandemic. I'll entertain any questions.
Hearing none, we'll sign it out. 7:51, that concludes joint session of Finance Community Economic Development Committees.
It is 7:51 in this joint committee of Personnel and Finance. This is an ordinance authorizing the hiring of Ms. Cassie Abraham to fill the Human Resource Generalist position at an annual salary of $48,000, and Ms. Dorothy Dipmore to fill the Health Benefits Manager position at an annual salary of $69,000 in the Human Resources Department, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, for the HR, we've had some vacancies in the HR department, and we had a position that we had at one time, didn't have for a while, and we feel a need to have it again. The HR Generalist position received 42 applicants. Civil Service provided a list of 12 qualified, I mean, 10 qualified applicants. And as we moved along through the process, we actually brought in two of the applicants to be interviewed, with Ms. Abraham being the candidate. For the HR Benefits Manager, we received over 25 applicants. Civil Service provided a list of nine qualified applicants. Seven of the applicants were given phone interviews, with our final choice coming down to one individual, Dorothy Dipmore. We are requesting for the HR Generalist salary to be $48,000. Currently, the minimum starting salary is $42,819. And for the Health Benefits Manager, we are asking for a salary of $69,000. The current minimum salary currently is $56,678. Both of these individuals come to us with degrees, great experience, and we think that they will be great candidates for the HR department. I'll answer any questions. And I also have the HR Director here present if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All righty, it is 7:54. That concludes Personnel and Finance.
At 7:54, or 7:55, call to order Public Safety and Thoroughfare Committee. The final resolution of adopting plans authorizing the Mayor or Director of Public Services to cooperate with and request the Director of Transportation to proceed with the lighting improvements at the U.S. Raph Road, 30th, Raph Road Interchange, lying between, within the city of Canton, and authorizing the auditor to pay any moral obligations related to the project, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Madam Chair, members of council, as typical with these ODOT projects, it's a two-ordinance process. The preliminary legislation was previously approved by ordinance 77, 2021. Now that ODOT is ready to go out to bid, they've requested the final participatory ordinance and agreement. Again, what this is, is they're doing some work in the area west of the Raph Road Interchange. Engineering has determined there are some electrical problems and some upgrades that need done that we're going to have to do one way or another with the lights in the Raph Road Interchange. So while ODOT is there and already bidding a project and already going to be dealing with all of the things that come with that, they have agreed to work with us and us just cover our cost of the lighting upgrades. So much more efficient process for us than having to kind of do it ourselves and deal with closing down Route 30 and all of those sorts of things to get it done. So the reason for the first reading passage and why we're doing this is ODOT requires the check in order to get this done by the end of the week. So assuming this passes, we're on kind of a quick turnaround time then for the rest of the week to get this thing processed. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? And this concludes Public Thoroughfare, Public Safety and Thoroughfares at 7:56.
Leader Babcock?
Mr. President, I move Rule 22A be suspended to place ordinances eight through 12. Resolution number 13, ordinances 14 through 16, and resolution is number 17 back on this evening's agenda.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend Rule 22A to place ordinances eight through 12. Resolution 13, ordinance is 14 through 16, and resolution 17 back on this evening's agenda. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Showman.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Skaglion.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Tenyes, Mr. President.
The motion carries an ordinance is eight through 12, resolution 13, ordinance is 14 through 16, and resolution 17 are a legal part of your agenda, leader.
Mr. President, I move we suspend statutory rules on ordinances eight through 12, resolution 13, ordinance is 14, 16 through 16, and resolution 17.
It's been moved and seconded to...
Is it second?
Oh, I'm sorry. Second? I know, you're not used to that. It's been moved and seconded to suspend the statutory rules of ordinances eight through 12, resolution 13, ordinance is 14 and 16, and resolution 17. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Showman.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Skaglion.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Tenyes, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number eight is adopted. Leader Babcock?
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number nine.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance number nine. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Showman.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Skaglion.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Tenyes, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number nine is adopted. Leader Babcock?
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number 10.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 10. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Showman.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Skaglion.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Tenyes, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number 10 is adopted. I'm... We're on 10. I'm good. We're on 10. Yeah, we're just doing 10. We did nine already. Ordinance number 10 is adopted. Leader Babcock?
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number 11.
It's been moved and seconded that you adopt ordinance number 11. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Showman.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Skaglion.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Tenyes, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number 11 is adopted. Leader Babcock?
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number 12.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 12. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Showman.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Skaglion.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Tenyes, one abstention, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number 12 is adopted. Leader Babcock?
Mr. President, I move we adopt resolution number 13.
It's been moved and seconded that you adopt resolution number 13. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Showman.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Skaglion.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Tenyes, Mr. President.
Motion carries a resolution number 13 is adopted. Leader Babcock?
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number 14.
It's been moved and seconded that you adopt ordinance number 14. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Showman.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Skaglion.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Tenyes, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number 15 is adopted. Leader Babcock?
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number 15.
It's been moved and seconded that you adopt ordinance number 15. Are there any remarks? All right. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Showman.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Skaglion.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Tenyes, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number 15 is adopted. Leader Babcock?
Mr. President, I move we adopt resolution number 17.
It's been moved and seconded that you adopt resolution number 13. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Showman.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Skaglion.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Tenyes, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number 16 is adopted. Leader Babcock?
Mr. President, I move we adopt resolution number 17.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 17. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Showman.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Skaglion.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Tenyes, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number 16 is adopted. Leader Babcock?
Mr. President, I move we adopt resolution number 17.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 17. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Showman.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Skaglion.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Tenyes, Mr. President.
Motion carries a resolution number 17 is adopted. Okay, we are now under ordinances and formal resolutions for the second reading. Mr. Clerk, would you please begin with ordinance number 18?
Ordinance authorizing Mayor Director of Public Service to enter into contract change order number one with Arcadis an amount not to exceed $54,302 for the water distribution system hydraulic model to perform transit modeling and evaluations of many appropriation ordinance number 49/2021, declaring same to be an emergency. Number 19, ordinance approving Canton City Water Main Extension to Advent Lutheran Church authorizing Mayor Director of Public Service to enter into any agreements necessary for the extension of said water main, declaring same to be an emergency. Number 20, ordinance authorizing Mayor Director of Public Service to advertise C-Biz Ward and enter into construction contract, execute professional services contract for construction engineering services, enter into a work license slash easement agreement with Wheeling Lake Erie Railway Company for the Island Avenue Southeast Area Sanitary Sewer and Waterline Project GP 1332, entering an agreement with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency to receive a low-interest loan for the sanitary sewer portion of the project, authorizing our established 5445 Island Avenue Sanitary Sewer Project GP 1332 fund, many appropriation ordinance number 49/2021, authorizing our to pay all moral obligations for contract change orders and declaring same to be an emergency. Number 21, ordinance adopting the city of Canton's alternative tax budget for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, declaring same to be an emergency. Number 22, an ordinance amending appropriation ordinance number 49/2021, declaring same to be an emergency. For 23, resolution designating public monies available for active and interim deposits and designating depository banks for said deposits, declaring same to be an emergency.
Leader Babcock?
Mr. President, I move we suspend the statutory rules on ordinances 21 and 22 in resolution 23.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the statutory rules of ordinances 21 and 22 in resolution 23. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Showman.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Skaglion.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Tenyes, Mr. President.
Motion carries, you've heard the three readings, leader?
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number 21.
It's been moved and... Good, good. Mr. President, okay. You've heard the three readings, leader. Mr. President, okay, it's been moved and seconded that you adopt ordinance number 21. Are there any more remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Showman.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Skaglion.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Tenyes, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number 21 is adopted. Leader Babcock?
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number 22.
It's been moved and seconded that you adopt ordinance number 22. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock.
Aye.
Showman.
in the summer youth program of how their employment turned out and how many kids were supported in that.
Member Smith? Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on a minute. You got a report ready?
Mr. President?
Go ahead.